All right. Okey doke. It's 5:30, so let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the Town of Star Valley Ranch Planning Commission for Tuesday, July 22 at 5:30. We do have a quorum of commissioners present, and also let the record reflect, we have Town Administrator Aiken, Building Official Kazir, and Town Clerk Hurd in attendance as well. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Sommerfeld, and a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Albers. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Now if I could have, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from June 18, 2025, which I believe were sent out on the 16th. Jamie, is that right? Were they in there too? I think we sent them out. Hopefully, everybody has seen them. Could I get a motion to approve the minutes from the 18th? It's been moved by Commissioner Sommerfeld, and a second? Seconded by Commissioner Naumoff? Did I say that right? Very good. Okay. Good for me. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Dalton.
There we go. That's all right. We're only just behind the 5:30 mark there. Okay, moving on with the agenda. The first item on the agenda is the Item 4A. This is a variance request for Plat 5, Lot 24, Mr. Arbuzu? I don't know Arbizu. I don't know if he's here this evening. Carrie's here. Hi, Carrie.
Yeah, it's Arbuzu.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So, the information I know for this one was sent out for the prior meeting that we unfortunately were not able to hold, and then it was also sent out again on the 16th. So this is a... And actually, Jamie, you've got the packet here, if anybody would like to look at it. But the gentleman in this various variance request, it's going to be a modular home, and the lot has 90 feet of road frontage, if I remember correctly. And because of the modular home design, which can't be changed, he's asking for a seven-foot side setback versus instead of 10 on both sides. And if I'm not mistaken, there is no... that the lot to the west is vacant, but there is a home on the lot to the east. Is that correct? Okay. And so he was proposing to also do the... have a larger front setback, just to help with sort of the look of, you know, the expansiveness of the lot. And he did provide us with... I thought it was a pretty good description of what they want to do, and also he addressed each of the special conditions and circumstances per the variance process. But just going to open it up for any discussion or questions anybody has on this one.
I thought it was good. And when we went to a larger-sized house years ago, we realized that there would be some lots in Plat 5 that we would have to do some variances.
Because there... I mean, I did look at all of Plat 5, and there are some other ones that have 90-foot frontage. Some are a little bit less than that, but most of them are like 100 or 110, so this is one of the more narrow ones.
So, I don't know. It's what we've seen in past in the past.
In your past P&amp;Z experience.
So are they gonna... they're gonna set the house back so that they're not right on that line? So there will be a little bit of room between like the seven feet and then a little bit more room? Is that what I'm understanding? Did I read that right?
So, do you have the...
The house sits... it exceeds in both sides of the 10-foot setback.
Right, right. But they're... but they're gonna move it back to help kind of offset that? So there actually will be more space there than the...
In the front than, yes, than usual.
And actually, that's something that we need to talk about.
Oh, yeah.
That doesn't change.
And they were not at the same setback as everything else.
So where's the question?
There's a visual thing there.
Cedar Creek's in the front there. Oh, this is... okay, this is Cedar Creek.
And it's Plat 5.
So I was just curious as to where the other... this one lane, one is empty, and then where's the other house on the other one? Where's it at?
I was gonna ask Scott, do you know what the setback is on the house that's built on the lot next to it?
I'm just curious. I mean, I'm okay with it. I just was just kind of wondering.
Thirty feet down in front of it, is what you're talking about.
Yeah, well, the existing house that's there. It seems like it's set for their back there.
It's 30, so they're gonna go back... they're gonna go back 60?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So that's quite... that's a lot more than I thought. Okay, that's fine. Yeah, fine. Okay, I just curious.
Have we heard anything from the people in the lot that's occupied next to them?
They sent out notices, so we have not heard anything back.
Okay.
Have variances like this been passed before?
Yes.
They have. Only because of special circumstances, because of the size of the lots. They're like, she... Kathy said, some were just, you know, very narrow. And I mean, it's either they have to go with a variance, or they're gonna have to change or modify the size of the house.
Is the house bought?
No. They haven't permitted it yet.
Haven't permitted it yet?
But it's a modular, so...
It is a modular.
He's limited in being able to
Yes.
change, you know, designs, I guess.
They're doing two modulators on the ranch, so if one fits the criteria and the other one doesn't.
Are there other Plats where this is a problem?
As far as the narrowness of the lots?
I don't think so.
I think it's probably mostly in Plat 5, but I'm not certain.
21 and 22, I don't think.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's pretty standard and even really large lots out there.
I know when I... I don't know where the document is, but I did a survey of lot sizes for each plat, just sort of informally. And I know Plat 5 definitely had the smallest average lot size compared to all the other Plats. Let me show you that here, out of curiosity. So...
So I see... I see in his request, his biggest concern is cost. Nothing else, right? Just cost.
Yeah, they're going with the... they're trying to use the same home on two different locations. So one, it fits it, but then the setbacks, the other one doesn't. So exceeds by two feet on each side.
So it wouldn't affect the garage too, or did I mean, if we...
Yes.
So where's the other one apart, are you thinking of?
The other one's, you know, pretty much past preliminary, but it's on Plat 12, we believe.
So I think what we need to do here is, after considering the information that's been provided, and if you have any more questions, that we would need to have a vote on approving the variance or not. And if the commission does not approve the variance, then the gentleman can appeal the decision to the town council, so.
I make a motion.
Okay, so. So there's a motion from Commissioner Dalton to approve the variance for Mr. Arbuzu, Plat 5, Lot 24. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Albers. Are there any questions from the public on this one?
Can I?
Yes.
Is it too late to ask a question?
No, now it's coming back to the commission. Now, any question... more questions from the commissioners?
Do we know if he made any progress with the association from the last meeting discussion? Kind of informal.
I'm trying to remember what the conversation was. Was there Carrie here from the association on this one? Is there?
We just received this this morning.
Okay.
It's going out... it has already been sent out to the Architectural Committee for first review. It will then go to the Board of Directors. They have to review the variance in public at the next meeting for approval or disapproval in front of the members, which won't be until the 21st of August. And the member does know this.
Okay.
We have not received any plans, any site plans, nothing but the variance request.
Okay.
And Plat 5 is the 10-foot 30, so it is part of the town ordinance as well.
Right.
I think the board will probably pre-pass it.
Right.
And we're still waiting on engineering on all four locations.
Okay.
Do you represent the association?
I'm the general manager, and this is our chairman of the board.
Yeah. So are we out in front of this then? Well, I guess we would need to approve a variance before you would have...
Well, yeah.
But if you don't have the engineering, then...
I'm still waiting on engineering. They had the wrong seismic. They had a... I mean, the law of engineering was incorrect. So I have not received... never received anything back from that week.
Okay.
So either one of those costs, but the one site plan is fine for the one, which is Arberry. Yeah, that's the other location.
Oh, okay. So they're gonna do both of them down there?
Yeah, they're both down there.
Plat 5, okay.
Same people?
Yeah.
What... are these for... to be residences or rentals?
Apparently, I think one supposedly rental, one's gonna be part-time, as I understand, so.
Well, I'm...
But we're still waiting on quite a bit of information from engineering, because the number was right, for snow loads, wind speed.
Okay.
Maybe it needed...
Well, then I'm kind of inclined then...
We're out of table.
I was gonna say that we should table it until the next meeting at least, and then, while that might not be enough time for the association to have looked at it by then, but I do think we should at least table it to our next meeting to see if you have a complete packet, so. All right. All right, then. Procedurally, I'm gonna probably get this wrong. So the motion to potentially approve this variance is tabled until... do we want to table it until the next meeting? Or till such time in the future as there's a complete packet?
Yeah, I think that.
Okay. So it may or may not be on the next agenda. We'll just have to wait and see if the packet comes in. Okay. Let me make a note here. We've tabled this to... Packet's complete. All right. Thank you. I did not realize that, so thank you, Scott, for letting us know. We didn't actually have everything on this one. Okay, moving on. So the next item on the agenda is the Star Valley Ranch Association Plat Amendment Application. This was a large bundle of documents, and it essentially... well, it's a plat amendment and also a rezon application. And those documents were sent out to the commissioners last week. I don't know if... there's not anyone from Sherbal that's here tonight. So the first thing I'm gonna do is just go through the process for this plat amendment. So the... whenever we get a plat amendment and rezon application per our ordinances, the first thing that happens is, at least two weeks after the information has been received, and I believe it came in like on the 5th or 6th of July or something like that, so... So at least two weeks after the information comes in, it's provided to the Planning Commission for... to then have a first meeting, which is what this meeting is. So and at this meeting, we need to consider that the application is complete, and if it's consistent with town ordinances, and then we have to set a schedule for the public hearing and a 30-day comment period. So that's what we'll do tonight. We'll take a look at it, and then also do a timeline for the next meeting. And within the 30-day period up to the next meeting, Jamie will make sure notifications go out to all the residents that are within 300 feet of the proposed plat amendment. And then we'll also do notices in the newspaper of the plat amendment application. And then we'll set the meeting at the second meeting of the Planning Commission. In conjunction with that, we'll have a public hearing, and we'll consider any comments that have come in, and also any comments from the public at that meeting. And it's at the next meeting when the commission will vote to either recommend approval or not of the application. And then after that, goes to the town council for final approval, which is kind of similar to the plat amendment process for those of you that were on the P&amp;Z before, when amendments of single-family residential lots would come forward. So let's do the timeline first. So if we... today is the 22nd, which is the first meeting, and we have to allow 30 days, at least 30 days, but then we have to also add another 10 days for mailing. So there's really a 40-day minimum. And I was looking on the calendar, and if we go out 40 days exactly, that's August 31st. So that's our next meeting in August, or second meeting in August would be on the 20... hold on. It was 35 days out, basically. It would be August 26th? Yeah, I think that's what you said. So since that's not enough time, in my opinion, we should push out until our meeting on September 10th for the public hearing. I'm open to input from the commissioners on that. I would rather personally not squish it down to 35 days, and let's... We know how the mail is around here, so if we're gonna send out notifications, it'll probably take a week to 10 days for people to actually get them and then get comments back to us. So the proposal would be to set the public hearing on the 10th of September, which would mean then the town council meeting on the 14th of October is when the final decision would be made. Does that sound reasonable?
That's the meeting where I just told you that I'll be traveling.
You'll be traveling?
So.
Okay. So as long as we have a quorum, and if you have input in advance of that, we can always include that. Okay, so that's the timeline then we'll go with. And we'll make sure, at the next meeting at the public hearing, we'll make sure the surveyor, Mr. Sherbal, will be here as well to answer any questions and things. So we do have Carrie is here from the association, and Mr. Violis is here too, the chairman of the Board of Directors. So if you have any questions for them, you can take advantage of them this evening and ask them about what they're doing here with the application and what the intent is. So I did read through all the documents, but I don't know for the commissioners if you have questions or need any additional details at this time on the application.
So lots 12 and 13 are already in use?
Yes.
So I understand, swimming pool and parking lot?
Yes, and our overflow of the parking lot is number 11.
And 11... 11 and 14, I understand, are on
The edges.
On each side or this side?
They're on each side.
Got the map here too. It's a big old... we got the big old Mylar map here, if anybody wants to see it.
Yeah. That's various. Okay, so.
Does anyone want to see the big?
So are you gonna... are you guys... what you're gonna do is move the playground or stuff, or is that... what's the... what's the plan?
Okay. The land was originally due to us. It was due to us as a county.
Okay.
Our town form, the town zoning as a local residential. So one, we're trying to put that, because it's not ever been real. So all deed is on the common area.
Okay.
So we want that proposed process, but also by combining that with planning to create a larger playground, create a plan and a project over the course of probably a five-year period. First of all, is to leave the playground on the mountain fairway and over into one of the secondary lots. And then from that point, just to create an overall infrastructure, perhaps a larger playground area. So that's what our subcommittee under Marcus is going to be looking at as the overall goal of those four plats.
Okay. How's that Marcus? I'm sorry. Saw someone else walk in with you. I didn't realize that was Marcus. So Marcus is also on the Board of Directors too. He's one of the new directors on the board. So in concert with that, they have requested a rezon, and we don't have... I guess we could... over here. So on the map over here, all of... so right now, the association has private recreation is what their zoning is for the golf course, and that's what you want to rezon those lots to private recreation as well, correct? And those are, I believe it's these ones right here. Probably so, right in here.
Yeah.
But... so basically, it would all be the same zoning as part of this, if they're going to approve it?
Yes, but it would remain separate and not part of the Cedar Creek course.
Right.
Yes, it would be its own smaller entity.
Okay.
Those lots are already used now, basically, as part of the park, right?
They have been, yes.
Yeah.
And let's see, what else do we have here? As far as I could tell, and Jamie and Scott, you can correct me, but we have everything that's required for the application, as far as all the attachments and the affidavits and the deed and all that other stuff. So the whole packet was here. It seemed to be complete to me. So again, no decision for the commissioners tonight. We just know that at the next meeting, which, well, at the public hearing meeting, it actually won't be the next meeting, the one on the 10th, is when the commission would need to be prepared to vote to approve or deny the application, so. Any other questions?
I have questions.
Yes.
Do we ever request kind of informal proof from the aid for the utilities about the vacancies? Because we have a blank affidavit here.
I did notice that too. That is a good question, and I don't know the answer to it, so. Carrie, do you know, does... I believe Sherbal is kind of... they put the whole package together on this. Are they the ones that would actually go to Silverstar for that? Have they submitted the utility easement?
Oh, yes.
Document?
They already... they already...
Okay. So it's just not done yet, but... So you were wondering if there's any kind of pre-information from Silverstar that we could get to ask them if they would have any?
No, or just we have it in again by the public hearing?
Okay.
Or before the public hearing?
Just make a note, so we can reach out to them, to either Sherbal, probably to Sherbal to find out if that's what their intent is, Jamie, so. Okay, any other questions? I don't think I had anything else. I mean, I know this is something the association's been working on for a while, so it'd be nice to have it moved forward. All right, and we've got the neighbor addresses. I had a question, actually, about the neighbor addresses. It's just an odd address. It says taxed on 3418. Is that?
I'm sorry.
On the list of addresses, like the neighbor notifications, the last row, all the addresses above the PO box, it says taxed on 3418. Is that the name of the organization or the company?
I don't know.
It just seems strange to me. I didn't know if maybe it was a typo or... There's so many, you know, companies that own property in the ranch, so I was like, maybe it's just an interesting company name or something, but... Or maybe it means something else. I just didn't know what it meant.
Well, they're all from different, you know...
Yeah, all different places. Yeah, it was just sort of odd, so I was like, I don't know what that is, but since we have to send out the notifications, I don't want them coming back or anything. Maybe we can... if you find out anything else about those, Carrie, can you let us know as far as those addresses?
To make it faster, I might myself know, and I'll just email.
Okay.
Okay, and I'll email Scott and Jamie.
And to Jamie, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did Sherbal provide these addresses?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe it's just what pulled out of the system, so. Okay, all good with that one for now. All right. Lots to review between now and the 10th, but... and then, of course, there will be public comment, so. All right, moving on. So now we're up to Agenda Item 5, which is the public comment portion of the agenda, and I know we have a couple of residents here that had an item they wanted to discuss, so Mr. Horton and Mr. Christensen?
Oh, thank you for speaking here. First of all, before, I want you to know that when I reference the IEDC, I'm referencing, that reference came from the IEDC website. Any ordinance or codes that I referenced, that was pulled directly off of the code on their website. When I reference the town ordinance, that came right off the website. And I am aware of the note on the website that said an ordinance on that website may not be the current. So if I am wrong in that reference, I'm sure that we will let you know, okay? But right now, that's the best that I can do, okay? We have filed two complaints on this log house that is being put on Plat 3, okay? I'm gonna start with the second complaint. If you guys want to talk about the first complaint, you can do that. Okay. When I turn in the first complaint, the mayor sent me a letter, an email, on July 17th, okay? And I... inside that email, it said... now, I'm not gonna read it all. If you want me to read it all, I'll present all this. I can show you all that if I have any kind of hit the highlights here. It says, quote, "Rather the permit issued for the log house, Plat 3, Lot 87, is governed by the International Residential Code, IRC 2021. That has also been adopted within our town code. Specially IRC 2021, Chapter 14, addresses the relocation or movement of buildings." Okay? I believe this is a typo. IRC 2021, Chapter 14, deals with heating and cooling equipment and appliances, if you go look at the code. IEDC 2021, Chapter 14, deals with relocating and moving of buildings. Okay? So the... so if the permit was issued under 2021, Chapter 14, IRC, and not IEDC 2021, Chapter 14, the permit's invalid. I don't have the permit, so I can't tell you which code it used. Okay, that's point one. Point two is, in Chapter 150 of Buildings, Code 150.017 is the purpose. And I can read the code again if you want, but I'm only gonna pick out what I feel is pertinent. And this is a quote from your code. For this reason, the town adopted elements from the International Building Code. And then it lists those international building codes. And I'm going to just read the abbreviations. If you want me to read the names, what they are, I will do that. You adopted IRC, IMC, IPC, IFGC, IFC, and NEC. NEC is not from International Building Code.
National Electrical Code.
National Electrical Code, that is correct. Okay. So according to 150.0.17, IEDC 2021 is not an adopted code by this town. I... I... I...
Sue.
IEDC code.
If I can just... at that point, so at our July meeting that we had earlier this month, regular town council meeting, we did pass on the third reading, the update to the 2021, IRC and the IEDC.
So you did adopt?
We did, yes.
Yes, we did.
And it's just... we have a process when we pass a new ordinance that it goes to the company that puts it on the website. It's called codification, and they usually only do that... is it quarterly now?
Yeah, quarterly, yeah.
So I don't even know if it's up there. There's a little portion at the top of the code agenda, like when you get to that part of the website, and it says code... or ordinance says pending codification. I don't even know if it's there yet.
Yeah, that's where I got this from.
Okay.
So it's not there yet.
Okay, so.
Like I said, give me that.
No, I understand, yes.
Okay, now, the use of IEDC 2021, Chapter 14. The issuing of a permit for this log home on Plat 3, Lot 87, under IEDC, Chapter 14, in this case, is a violation of IEDC 2021, Chapter 1, Scope and Administration, Section 102, Applicability, A102, Other Laws. Okay, I want to make that clear, and I'll come right back to that. Okay. In your town ordinance, 150.060, Building Construction Site Requirements, Item 1, All Structural Building Materials Shall Be New. That's for everything. This ordinance states that all structural building materials shall be new materials for all types of construction in the town of Star Valley Ranch. This includes but is not limited to the following: residential homes, commercial homes, storage sheds, garages, modular homes, manufactured homes, and any structure that is relocated onto a lot within the town, et cetera. Okay. New materials for structures to be moved within a town. And where this is located is under manufactured homes and reman... and modular homes. And where this is located is under manufactured homes and reman, and modular homes. It states in there that they shall be 12 months or less newer to be able to place on the ranch. Okay? I was part of the team years ago that drafted and updated this ordinance. And Floyd Sidaway was involved in that, and so was Ken Harper, so those are two other people that can be talked to about that. Okay? As you should know and be aware of, town ordinances supersede building codes. In other words, a town chooses a building code to follow, then writes town ordinances to change, modify, or delete parts of a building code. That's just how it's done. Okay? Now I'm going to come to that reference to the I, the reference to the IEDBC 2021, Chapter 1, Scope Administration, Section 1, Applicability, Laws 102, Other Laws. It says, and this same sentence is in your IRC 2021, just kind of down in the same area. It says, "The provisions of this code shall not be deemed to nullify any provision of local, state, or federal laws." An ordinance is a law, or decreed by a municipality, a local law, and there are legal precedents for that. And Ordinance 105.60.060, Building Construction and Site Requirements, clearly states that all construction in the town shall use new constructional building materials. The log home at Plat 3, Lot 87, is not constructed of all new structural building materials. It is, the log home is, therefore, the log home cannot be relocated to the Town and Star Valley Ranch under IEDBC 2021, Chapter 14, because to say, to do so is a violation of IEDBC 2021, Chapter 1A, 102, Other Laws. Since a log home would be a violation of a local, of a local law, the town cannot use IEDBC 2021, Chapter 14, to issue a permit to relocate the house. Okay, so I did say that the IRC and the IEDBC both have that provision about nullifying the ordinance. In summary, well, no, wait, one other thing. I was hoping they were going to stay. It really was.
You scared him away.
I sat on the P&amp;Z board, and I sat on the Architectural Committee, and I sat on the committee years ago. Okay? And I do realize that the town is not here to enforce the DCCRs, and we dealt with that over and over again. But, the working relationship between the town and the association is, what you want to prevent is one organization giving a permit and the other one denying. You want, so there's got to be a working and a trust relationship here. That can be done many different ways. Okay? Now, Mayor, in your letter to me, you said that the association issued a certificate of conformance?
Yes.
I am going to take that to mean that there's no problems with the DCCR? Is that what that means?
The, earlier this year, we sat down with the association, with the Architectural Committee that they have, to try and work out processes for exactly, to avoid exactly what you refer to, them denying something and us approving something. And also, from the town's perspective, we don't want to hold up issuing permits if the association hasn't gotten through their review either, but we do want to work with them, you know, so that we don't create problems for the people trying to build here. So, the association came up with a new form, they're calling it a Certificate of Conformance, I don't have that one in front of me. And on it, they go through and check, does it meet their requirements? So their DCCRs, their aesthetic provisions and all that. And they provide that Certificate of Conformance to the town, we include it in our building packet and our permit packet. And so we received from the association an approval, an approved COC for that home. And then we went ahead and issued a permit, so this all happened in the April timeframe.
So, that's what I thought. So, I just want to bring this up, you guys can form whatever opinion you want, but I want to make you aware of this. DCCR article, well, first of all, before I start this, the Wyoming Supreme Court made rulings a couple of years ago. One of their rulings that they said was that the language inside the DCCRs is plain and simple language. This is a big, important statement. You can read the DCCRs, it's plain and simple language, clear, and that, the only court that can overturn that is the Supreme Court of Washington. Okay? So, I'm going to read this to, read just the section of this. Article 8, Use Restrictions, Section 9, Paragraph 8. No old or second-hand structures will be moved onto any of said lots.
You're quoting here from the DCCR?
Yes, ma'am, directly from the DCCRs. And it also says in the bottom half of that, "Shall be new construction of good quality workmanship and materials." Now, I do, when I read this, it's plain and simple language, that log home does not meet this DCCR requirement. Okay? The DCCRs are, is a contractual document. That is also stated in that Wyoming Supreme Court decision. Okay? And the DCCRs can only be changed every 30, I mean every 20 years, and the next time it can be changed is 2031. A DCCR cannot be variance, cannot have a variance, cannot be changed, cannot be modified in any way. It's not allowed by, by law. Okay? So, based on this, you form your opinion whether or not that letter of compliance is accurate. Okay? The last thing that I would like to talk about is variances. Okay? When I sat on the P&amp;Z board, I went through a lot of variances. Okay? Very, very complicated, can get very complicated at times. Okay? It still states in your ordinances, 154.083, B, which is variance, 2, which is standards, and it says in standards, "In order to authorize a variance, the planning commission must find all the following conditions are met." And that's A to F. So any variance, we, we used to look at it as, we'd look at A, special conditions and circumstance exist, is that a yes or no? B, not a result of the applicant, yes or no? And when we had a variance, we had these listed down, and all those were answered, yes or no. And when we got down to the bottom by doing our due diligence, we looked, if they were all a yeses, then it was a good variance. If it was a, if there was any one that wasn't a yes, it was a no for a variance. In dealing with this log home, F, harmony with regulations, the granting of a variance is consistent with a general purpose and intent of these regulations or ordinances. Okay? Yeah, again, we go back to 150.060, "All building materials shall be new." There isn't any wiggle room in there, that's one statement. So, if a variance comes up to move the log home onto the ranch and let it be done, and a variance is there, it will not pass F because the original intent behind the ordinance is that there will be no old structures on this ranch. And it's been that way since 1972, when the first DCCR went in, which I just read you what that DCCR was. So the whole intent from the original foundation of the association before it became a town, that no old structures would ever, or old buildings ever, would be on the ranch, that only new construction was. And that was to preserve our values, values of our house, to keep our property values up. And that's all.
Could I just interrupt and say?
Sure.
What else have we talked about?
So this is the, it's Plat 3, Lot 87. It is a log home that is being moved onto a new foundation with a new garage on that site. And you may have read about the log home in the newspaper, and it's transported down from Jackson. There's some photos of it there, Mr. Horton has.
It fell off.
This is an article for the Jackson Hole News and Guide. It said, here's a picture of it where it got wrecked.
It's supposed to be a historic house.
And then there's a statement in here that says, "The house shifted and fell several more times."
Oh, I do remember that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't realize.
And this is the one, this is the one that sat down on the Hornet Park, and across the wood and, that's destruction report.
What I can address is that, so there was, there's not been a variance request on that home. And the town, when it first came up, a permit was issued for it back in April, and the association provided the COC, and we moved forward with it just as a permit, and some of the actual, you know, hookup of that home will be similar to a modular, it's not a modular home, but some of the procedure to put it on its foundation is similar. And in talking with Scott, you know, he's been doing inspections on that home as the situation has progressed.
And it did come with engineer stamp dimes from Jackson, it was inspected in Jackson prior to this, but it is a couple of years old.
Yes, but the thing is, it is in violation of Town Ordinance 150.060, is not constructed of new material. And that code has been, that light has been in a code since day one of the forming of this town. And to this day.
It's not a historic house?
No, ma'am.
So, it's not constructed with new materials, but two of them are two years old?
I don't, I don't know what was...
I have no idea.
No, I do. But, but the legal precedents in the code for modular and manufactured homes, it's got, they've got to be less than 12 months old.
Right, and it's...
So, so therefore, if you relate that to a house, or another structure being moved on to the ranch, if, I believe that if, well, the town did it dot IEDBC, and if that house was less, that log home was less than 12 months old, then you would be within the legal rights to move that on, on, on the town. But since that house is not, older than 12 months old, and not constructed of new material, it is in violation of 150.060. And we're asking you to put a stop notice on that project and to remove the permit based on that violation and that you cannot use IEDBC 2021 to relocate it because you're in violation of Chapter 1 of the same ordinance, which I just read that to you earlier. So, that's one of your...
So, and I, I really appreciate all the, you know, the review of the ordinances and all of your background and history too with the town, you know, well before when I was here, I would, one of the things that has come to my mind is that when log homes are built on the ranch, do we know if those logs are 12 months old, or 24 months old, or 36 months old? I mean, it depends on whether they're air dried, kiln dried, there's all sorts of processes for that particular type of structure, so are we, by using that all new materials, should we just not allow any log homes going forward?
We, we, we address that issue. Whenever a log home, when you buy a log home, it comes in a kit. You can buy it from a kit, or you buy it from somebody that is actually going out getting the logs, putting the logs together, building the frame, and they build it on a, usually when they do that, they build it on a site, pre-built, and that only takes about six months for that logs to be cut, put on, trained, put up, and put back. But you're getting that material from a, from a builder, a builder, and the builder is supposed to use, if they're following our code, is supposed to use new material. That is required for the builder to do. So if the builder goes out and gets old logs, he's in violation of the building code. Okay? And if you get it from a, from a vendor, okay, you're getting it as a kit, kiln dried, stuff like that. Well, I, you can say that about building two-by-fours and stuff like that that are kiln dried. When you buy from Home Depot, that two-by-four is considered new. When I get it from, any material from a supplier, it at that point is considered new. Okay? So, that's how I would answer your question about log homes.
Yeah. So I, I think there's a little variability there. I, I will also point out that, so this did not come before this planning commission, and it is not scheduled to because there's no variance request on the table right now. So, we do have a complaint from Mr. Christensen and Mr. Horton that we're looking through, so I'm, we're not going to make a decision to pull a permit this evening.
No, no, we weren't aware, we were still under the impression that...
This body...
This body actually had, you know, kind of like a P&amp;Z board...
Right.
...affiliation type thing. We were just aware of that, we weren't aware of that change.
Right, and that's relatively like within the last, well, I think it was as of the end of last year. It's relatively new.
So, so at that point, we were just wanting to make you, we'd already decided a few years, and we just thought it would be, to make you aware. We will be at the town meeting tomorrow night.
Okay.
Because that's where we talk with you and the town council.
Okay, no, and I...
So it hasn't, it hasn't been moved yet?
No, it is sitting onsite waiting to be placed on foundation.
It has not been set on the foundation.
Yeah, so.
I put a stop on it a week ago, but then, yeah, so it has not proceeded yet.
Yeah, we're, we're not here to give anybody control. We were here just to spot that thing going on, and we feel that it's in violation of the code, and we just, that's what, that is the intention.
Well, thank you for coming and talking with the planning commission about it as well, so, and I'll, we'll see you both tomorrow evening at 6:00 and at our work session, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your comments.
All right.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the, I just wanted to remind the commissioners about the Lincoln County Community Overlays, if you have any comments on those. Those are due by, well, I need to get them back to Lincoln County by the 1st of August, so if you can get any comments in to me by the end of the month, that would be appreciated.
Is that the 35-page thing you sent us? Is that, is that, what you're talking about?
Um, it wasn't that long, I don't think.
Because I, I'd read something, it was...
It's charts.
Yeah, it's charts and all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, when, when...
It's the same one, I found an error.
Let me see, oh, actually, the email that Jamie sent on the 16th has it in there, it's just one document, Lincoln County overlays, and you might be thinking of the master plan stuff I sent out recently, which was much longer.
Yeah, I got those today.
Overlays, overlays, I'm, I'm not, I don't know how, whether they're actually used, perhaps, but here's something I thought of when I looked at those that aren't in any of the counties. And that is.
See you tomorrow, Trevor. Thank you. Sorry.
When having a fire prevention or fire protection overlay makes sense?
I think we have one of those in our town ordinances, I believe. We have a fire zone overlay. I might be wrong about that.
I, I just, I'm just kind of thinking about that all the time. And when I read those overlays, I thought, you know.
I had a couple of comments to them, but they're pretty small. But I'll make sure the, I mean, there's some things that are in them about, as far as for the Star Valley Ranch community overlay, and allowing, which that zone encompasses more than just the town. It's some of the area around the town too. And it allows commercial storage units.
Yes, I know that, and adult.
Adult uses, yes. Whatever those consist of. But, um, so, and that isn't, those two things in particular were not in the original recommendations from the town. So I, I was certainly going to include that as a change again. Not that they will change it, but it's a recommendation from the town that we prefer not to have more storage units in the surrounding vicinity. But not sure how far that'll go. But, okay. So just a reminder, if you do have any comments, please send those to me. Um, the next item on the agenda is, Jamie's been helping me. We've been trying to put down some processes, um, and procedures for the Planning Commission, such as, for instance, the, uh, plat amendment process we're going through. It is spelled out in the ordinance. Um, but we would like to, you know, maybe put some one-page, some whole, you know, block diagram kind of processes that we could use, you know, that'll right here on the table, that just would help everybody out to follow what the process is and the timelines and things like that. And I still think having our own, I think you called them bylaws at one point, but having our own Planning Commission set of, um, guidelines would be useful. And we haven't embarked on that yet. I think I've said a couple of times I would try and find some examples and send them out. But it is something I would like help from the commission in, in starting to put down on paper. Again, I know we're sort of a fledgling Planning Commission, but if we can get some of our procedures and our, um, our guidelines down on paper, I think it'd be helpful for all of us and then for future commissioners, you know, that might come onto the board as well, or to the commission.
And all of that I requested in the name of giving us credibility.
Yeah, that would help you.
Well, it's true.
You know why.
And also not confusing us with the previous P&amp;Z.
Right, exactly, right, which is.
That, that, in my own head, this is tricky.
Yeah, well, it is, and I mean, these gentlemen were not aware. So, you know, that was half an hour of, that otherwise they would have just gone to the work session tomorrow night, which they will again. So, um, okay. That's, um, items to be turned over to the town council. I don't think, we only had a couple of things that went for the town council. So I don't think there is any right now. Um, action items for the next meeting. We were going to follow up about the utility easements for the Star Valanche Association, amen, or plat amendment application. And then we'll be getting, Jamie's going to be getting notices out, so we'll have all that going on. And everyone just needs to take a look at those documents before the 10th of September, before the vote on that. Are there any saved rounds from anyone?
I, I.
Yes.
I, I know we tabled the variance on the setbacks.
Yes.
Could I ask a question? In his, his, uh, letter for variance, he says that the situation is not a result of the applicant. He says, "The constraints are due to the nature of the modular design and the layout of the lot, not actions taken by us as applicants. These are factors beyond our control." Well, I don't buy that.
I'm sorry.
He's buying, he, he owns the lot, he knows what the lot is, he knows what the ordinances are, and then he's going to go and buy a modular house that doesn't fit. That is an action within his control.
Or he could put it sideways.
He said that somebody already told him he couldn't put it sideways.
Well, I think because we have something in ordinance that says you need to have your front door facing the street.
Yep, yes, we just added that.
I'm the one that told him that.
Yep.
I suppose if he wanted to put it.
He could go with a smaller modular, if he wanted.
Yeah. I mean, you know, don't, don't tell me this is beyond your control. And I'm sorry it's going to cost you more money, but I'm not here as a cost concern commission.
And I, I mean, to go back to something Mr. Horton was saying, you know, as far as the variance procedure, you know, you have, as a commission, you have to find that it meets all of these conditions. And so just like last time with the Walnut Drive variance, you know, you guys could not put a check mark on all of those, so it was a no. So I would definitely say relook all of these before the next meeting. In the event he does have all of his, you know, drawings and engineered stuff in, and this is ready to be voted on, you know, maybe it isn't something.
But it's not built yet, my.
No, no, it's not permitted.
So he, he could alter a little bit, but then, did I understand something about the garage? If they altered, there was something, how did I read that?
They say something about.
Apparently, what I, as I read it, this house he wants, he can't have the garage on it if he doesn't get these setbacks.
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. I knew there was something about the garage.
The factory-built home cannot be reconfigured to offset the garage separately. And onsite construction of a garage would triple the cost and delay the project significantly.
I got the engineered plans, but neither one of them met the seismic, you know, zones for this area. So I asked him for, to get the right snow load, you know, wind speed, all that stuff. Because they were zone for some, Zone C were more than D extreme. But, uh, so, and I have not heard back since that was up.
Where'd you go?
Okay.
The other thing I want to say is I really like this basically bulleted format. And I think it'd be awesome if we had a bulleted format on a piece of paper with nothing written in other than the bullet items. And, and let every variance that comes to us meet these before they get put to us.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not on us.
Well, I think that was one of the things with the Walnut Drive one. He had a nice letter describing everything, but he didn't really address each of these criteria. So.
His wife did say he makes nice buildings, which again, you know, I like this boom, boom, boom.
So these are.
Just give it to us.
When I was talking about like the processes and procedures, you know, these are the kind of things I think we can help, you know, work on and create forms or at least our own little guidance documents that'll help with the decision-making in the meetings and help move things forward, so.
That could just, I mean, he did the initiative himself, but that could just be the application.
It's in the application, right.
It's you have to answer questions.
In the variance application.
It is in our ordinances, variance request.
It is. Is it?
Is it?
I just don't, I don't.
Uh, well, maybe we need to have one for them to, you know, just so that everybody then is providing at least the information that the commissioners have to make a decision on, so. But that, we can work on that, that shouldn't be.
By the way, I believe the ordinance update, new update is on the website now.
Is it with the new code?
Yeah.
I submitted that, so I was going to ask them.
Lee Hansen referred me to something that didn't exist.
Oh.
And then I did a Google search for the new one and got it, and there it was. So it's up.
All right, um.
Your old URL won't get you there.
Oh, okay. Oh, interesting. It's spinning right now.
Yeah, you're just the mayor.
Go right out.
You got Fred though.
Okay, any other saved rounds? Kept you all here long enough. All right, then I, let's have a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Somerfeld, second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Nellmuff, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned at 6:29.
That's pretty good.
Oh, boy, tomorrow night's going to be fun.
Are you feeling okay?